Good evening. We're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome to the February 3, 2025, regular city commission meeting, starting at 6 o'clock PM. Before we do Pledge of Allegiance, we have a special recognition. We're going to introduce a new public safety officer.
I'm going to do two things. Today, our last career fire officer, Captain Scott Kasachek, retired after 25 years of service. Tomorrow will be a complete cross-trained department where all of our officers will be trained in police and fire. So this has been going on since 2012, and today's the day that it has taken place.
Wow.
Now, the big news. I'd like to welcome Public Safety Officer Zachary Weber. Zach graduated from Eau Claire Public Schools, special place in my heart. I coached Beaver football at Eau Claire for many years and also Lake Michigan College. He started his career as a public safety officer in Benton Harbor in 2017. And on Friday, he became the newest member of St. Joseph Department of Public Safety. I think his daughter's happy back there. After leaving Coloma Township Police Department, where he spent the last four years, he's a tremendous asset to our department, and I look forward to the great things he would do in our community. He is here today with his wife and children, so that's welcome. PSO Zach Weber.
Hello, everybody. So as Director Newbaker said, my name is Zach Weber, and I'm the newest low guy in the totem pole, working for St. Joe Department of Public Safety. And back here is going to be my wife and two daughters, Lindsay and the fussy one is going to be Josephine. And then the oldest one is going to be Bella. I've been doing this for about seven years now. I worked three years in Benton Harbor before going to Coloma. And then a couple of their guys had to pull my teeth coming over here, but I'm so glad that I did because after my first week with them, I know this is going to be a fantastic department. I'm hoping to have a long, successful career that I can retire here from. So, thank you, guys.
Wonderful. Thank you. Welcome. I've worked with Officer Weber through my day job at the Children's Advocacy Center, and I have no doubt he's going to do a fantastic job for us. So, welcome to the city. All right, that moves us right along to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, undebted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we move to approval of the agenda. What's the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All right, Abby, call the roll. Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
All right, now time for public comment. Reminder that these are for items on the consent agenda or items that are not on the agenda at all. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium, state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Jessica Chabell from 403 State Street, Unit 4. And I don't know if I've ever told everyone here that I'm actually the president of the conduit, or Great Lakes Conduit Association. We were finally able to have a committee meeting in our association, and they have sent me with a little thing that they would like me to say to represent us. I want to start by saying that I understand the importance of our tourism in our town. Our shops, restaurants, and businesses thrive in the summer months because of visitors who come here to enjoy everything we have to offer. But we, the year-round residents, are the ones who keep this town running, not just for the season, but all year long. The proposal to monetize daily parking spots may seem like an easy way to generate revenue, but it will come at a significant cost to those of us who live and work downtown. Many of us rely on these parking spaces just to access our homes and businesses. If they are turned over to hourly tourists, where are we supposed to go? That's why I believe we should consider a new solution, implementing a town-operated shuttle service for tourists. Rather than competing with visitors for parking, we should be reserving essential downtown spots for the residents and business owners while directing visitors to designated lots outside of the downtown core. A reliable shuttle system would allow the town to collect revenue from visitors while ensuring that residents are not the ones left scrambling for a place to park every day. With the town budget potentially available to fund a shuttle, why wouldn't we explore an option that supports both tourism and the people who live here? If we want a long-term plan that benefits everyone, we need to prioritize residents first. I urge the town to take this shuttle service solution seriously before moving forward with a plan that pushes its own people out of their own community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. That moves us on to the consent agenda. Items include regular meeting minutes of Monday, January 13, 2025, amended meeting minutes of November 18, 2024, tax invoice and tax disbursements, quarterly investment report PA 20, agreements 2025, summer tax collections, fee schedule amendment, 2027 Main Street Reconstruction Project, TAP grant resolution, Labor Council Engagement Letter, Second Amendment to Padler Park Concession Agreement, Special Event Lori's Place Run-Walk Rock, Crasle Art Fair on the Bluff. And that is it for the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
All right, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Next up is item number 16, Zoning Ordinance Amendment Sections 4.6.3, 464, and 111222. Allow medium-heavy social institutions as permitted in the use in the CO districts on the street level first floor. Curious Kids Museum, second and final reading.
Yes, so during your meeting last month on January 13, you recommended approval of the first reading or adopted it. This is a request from Curious Kids to modify the zoning ordinance so they can expand their facilities into the old Heritage Center building. That property is located in the CO Commercial Office District, which does not allow social institutions on the ground floor that are considered medium-heavy, and their use would be considered medium and heavy. So the amendment needs to take place for them to move in there. On January 2, the Planning Commission did conduct their public hearing and recommended approval of the proposed text amendment that would allow the use to be on the ground floor, similar to the C Commercial Business District and the I-1 Light Industrial District. They are here if you have any questions for them.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission, comments? None?
None.
All right, this was all voted on last time, so this is just the second and final reading. I have no additional questions other than commenting that we love supporting our local nonprofits. So what is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the second and final reading of an ordinance to amend Article 4, Sections 4.6.3, Table 4-1, and Table 4.6.4, Table 4-2, and Article 6, Section 11.12.22, as they relate to medium-heavy social institutions in the CO Commercial Office District and the zoning ordinance of the City of St. Joseph, Michigan, based on the factors set forth under Section 22.3 of the zoning ordinance.
Support.
Any public comment on the matter? Or anyone from Curious Kids have any thoughts, feelings? It's okay. All right, great. Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Good luck. All right, on to item number 17, Zoning Ordinance Tax Amendment, Sections 2.3, 3.9.3, 3.9.7, and 3.10, lot coverage landscaping, planer boxes, and retaining walls, final reading.
So this request came, kind of originated out of the Zoning Board of Appeals. They requested that the Planning Commission look at the existing regulations. We do not define the term retaining walls, or we came up with planer boxes to address some improvements that are made to property, properties. And then, as we evolved discussing those things, we realized there was a conflict in the language pertaining to lot coverage that needed to be cleaned up to come into compliance with a long-term, a longstanding interpretation of the definition of lot coverage, which would include anything six inches above grade or stair, which would be steps or decks, would count towards lot coverage, which is something that has been done for many years. So on November 7, after talking about this for several months, the Planning Commission conducted their public hearing and recommended approval of the request. It was then forwarded to the City Commission on November 18, where there was a four-to-one vote in support of the first reading of the ordinance. For different reasons, it's been not been on the agenda, and we are here to request that it be approved. So retaining walls, again, like I said, are something we allow anywhere on a piece of property. This just defines what a retaining wall is because there was some confusion over what a retaining wall was. And that's something that holds up natural grade, or if it was mass graded, to need a retaining wall. And there are places in town that do have them. In addition, planer boxes is something new we define, and that's because we're getting more short little planer boxes. Either they're man-made out of wood timbers, or they're like metal things that people put in their front yard or backyard for landscaping. And those, the Planning Commission recommended a maximum height of two feet, anything more than two feet. So if it's two feet or less, you can put it anywhere on your property. If it's greater than two feet, then it would need, it would not be allowed in the front yard of your house, at your dwelling. So those are, those changes, and then the lot coverage, correcting that to how it's been interpreted for many years. So this is the second reading of the ordinance, and if it is approved, it'll become effective in 10 days.
Any questions, comments from the commission?
In those rare instances, and there are a few that I can think of in St. Joe, where there, people have two front yards because they face two front, they would be bound by whatever it is spelled out for front yards. They don't have.
It would be the two feet, or you could request a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
How much does it cost for a resident to request a variance?
The fee is $600, and that's because there's a legal notice. That's typically 200, runs about 2, 2190 and 250, depending on it. And then we are required to notify all property owners within 300 feet. So it covers the cost of staff and those two, those two documents.
All for a resident to comply with a complex rule and to essentially bring their dissenting opinion on how their yard should be treated if they feel it should be just a regular front yard or if this is truly their side yard and alter the definition. Right?
Yeah.
Because I asked those questions to reiterate, I have the same concerns I had when we first heard this, you know, back in November. We have complicated rules, you know, downstairs. If anybody wants them, you can request a copy of our city ordinances. They're all online. Either way, they're, you're looking at about over a 3,000-page document that is very complicated. I think we need to find ways to make that simpler for our residents, not, not add more spider webs to it. I was against adding this additional complexity back in November, and I still am today. I plan on voting no to this amendment again.
Any other questions, comments?
I guess, could you speak to, you know, Michael's concerns? Is this an addition or clarification? Maybe you could just give a brief overview of what this is really doing versus what we have on books right now.
In regards to which of the?
Both.
Both of them. Okay, so in regards to lot coverage, we are, the draft language change, adds some additional terminology to the term lot coverage and includes anything six inches above grade. There's other parts of the zoning ordinance that call out the six inches above grade being counted. The definition did not have that language in there. There's been a long-term interpretation from the previous zoning administrator dating back to pretty close to when the zoning ordinance was adopted, that it was six, anything six inches above grade counted towards lot coverage. So that has always been enforced that way since the ordinance was adopted. So we're not really changing the way it's been interpreted. We're just making it more clear to eliminate any confusion. So there was just the one spot in the zoning ordinance that needed those terms, those words added to it, and that's within the definition. In regards to the planer box that is new, what happened is we had a property that installed a structure, or they built something in their front yard that was on the front lot line, which was probably 51 inches tall. They, when it was first built or noticed, it had a concrete padding cover on top of it, so it looked like it was an extension of the porch. It was the same height as the porch. They did it without any permits, so they were directed to apply for a variance. They applied for a variance, and during that process, they decided we'd rather appeal the decision that was made by the zoning administrator. And so they appealed the decision. The Zoning Board of Appeals heard that appeal at their next meeting and concluded that the zoning ordinance does not have any language to talk about what this thing was. Really wasn't a retaining wall because it was not natural grade. There was discussion about natural grade, and some people believed it should be natural grade. Some believed otherwise. So it was concluded that it was landscaping. We do not define the term landscaping. And so that the thing can remain, you know, it's not, it's just there. But the zoning Board of Appeals members, the remaining of them, thought that it should be reviewed by the Planning Commission because some believed it was intrusive because a fence in your front yard is limited to four feet, or three feet, six inches, and this was considerably taller and being viewed as landscaping. And we didn't really define landscaping. So it was just kind of tidying it up a little in hopes that, you know, that type of wouldn't happen again. It is a masonry structure. You know, it's concrete paver blocks up. They did remove the concrete pad that was on top of it and put in landscaping, but some people believed it was more than, to call it landscaping, it just seemed really odd, I think, to some people.
So it sounds like there's a situation that was ambiguous, and this language is to help clarify if this were to ever happen again, it makes a little bit more clear on how to proceed because that situation was so confusing.
So, yes, and then, so, and we took a lot of pictures, and then towards the end of your packet, they're divided up into planer boxes and retaining walls. So you can see a vast majority of them are low, two feet or shorter, that are in the front yard. There's a couple that are taller than that, and they can remain. They're just not conforming, and that's fine.
What's the thought process on including anything that is above six inches as part of the lot coverage? And here's my concern, some of the lots down below the bluff are very narrow. They have very small front yards. Often, many of them in the backyard have nothing between them and the lake or just an alleyway. And if somebody wanted to put in a deck, it's, it's necess, out of necessity, it's going to be more than six inches high. If they wanted to cover a good portion or all of their backyard, I, I'm not sure why we would be opposed to that. So where if we, if we raise that from six inches to 12 or 18 inches, then they could at least have a ground-level deck and not have it counted against their lot coverage.
Yeah, I think increasing it to 12 inches or 18 inches, again, if it's, if it's part of the structure, so it has the setbacks, the five-foot or seven-foot building setback, but you're also up higher, and now you, you know, some people would say, oh, now I'm looking in my neighbor's yard because I'm up that little much, a little more. And then where does it really stop? You know, we do have a lot of decks in town. People comply with the rules, and it, I think it also, then you're calling out decks specifically. So are you going to count things? Some things we're going to count this way, and some things we're going to count differently. I think that would, to me, would add a little confusion. So just saying six feet, six inches, you know, allows for some decks. Some decks are taller, like you know. I just think it, it could change the appearance. You know, as you get them up higher, you know, you're, now I have an umbrella on my deck, or I have a covered area, and it just increases the height where it may be more intrusive than on the neighbors or, you know, not that we look at blocking sunlight and that kind of stuff, but that is part of the zoning ordinance is, you know, fresh air and air movement and, you know, things along that line. So, and it has been a longstanding interpretation of six inches.
Okay.
Is that pretty standard across all municipalities?
You know, it, I don't have a specific answer. I'd have to go back to see if we looked at a dimension. I don't think we did simply because it was an interpretation that had been made for many years. I would say it's pretty standard. If it was a deck, they would just call it out. A deck counts towards your lot, your lot coverage. And in a lot of zoning ordinances, there's two different terms. There's a term for building coverage, which is anything with a roof or raised up like a deck. And then there's lot coverage, and lot coverage is, again, everything that's a building coverage plus anything that's a hard surface. And that gets into areas where there's stormwater issues, drainage issues. You know, it's just another way to control how much of the property is covered over. So, but we, our term lot coverage is more of like a building coverage rule.
I think, you know, as I understand, you know, this specific rule and how this came about, you know, we found something that, you know, there was not a clear definition. There was not a rule on how to handle this new thing that was encountered. And I think if we, if we look for things to regulate, we will find them. I don't think that's what we should be doing. I think we need to take the approach with our zoning ordinances of how to keep things the most efficient and resident-friendly. And I do not think that this is a step in that direction. Still where I was five minutes ago.
Did, did our decision to wade into this change, did it stem from a complaint? Or did it just stem from a condition that was undefined?
I think it was something that the property owner came in, asked questions, was told what the process was and what would be allowed under the zoning ordinance. And then we later found that the work had been done without a permit.
Kristen, correct me if I'm wrong. When it went to the ZBA, didn't they sort of advise that the Planning Commission work on this specifically?
Then after, after everything was final, completely discussed with the ZBA, and they made their interpretation that it was landscaping because they didn't know what else to call it because there was no definitions. Then there was, that vote was one to four in support of it's landscaping, and that's it. So, or, yeah, there was, and then another member stated, well, okay, I agree with, we've come to that conclusion, but we don't want this to happen in the future. So we believe that the Planning Commission should study this and see if we should define anything or address it so it does not happen because it was believed to, you know, in some cases, not be the most appropriate thing to be constructed, especially in the front yard. So, again, that was four, four members were in support of that, and one was not.
Can you clarify for me, Kristen? Was it the whole ZBA that?
Four members on ZBA.
Was it the whole ZBA that asked for the Planning Commission to look into it, or just one?
The, the zoning Board of Appeals asked the Planning Commission on occasion to review things.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
I think the additional definitions filled a gap, and that was kind of what they were looking at. Retaining walls hadn't been addressed before, and that was just, for example, to, yeah, we have them all over, they're fine, and as long as they are kind of your classic retaining wall, there was no reason to change it. It was just defining it, so, you know, trying to address the gaps that they believe were in part of the ordinance.
To me, it doesn't sound like we were out there looking for things to change. It was something that bubbled up. It was ambiguous, and we needed to clarify it. And that's what the Planning Commission and ZBA did. And so they put a lot of work into figuring out how to clarify, how to give a little bit more guidance to this situation, and this is what we're looking at today.
Correct.
Okay. What other questions does the commission have? Nothing? All right, what is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the second and final reading of an ordinance to amend Article 2, Section 2.3, Definitions, Article 3, Sections 3.9, Accessory Uses and Structures, 3.9, 3, Location and Required Setbacks, and 3.97 Porches and Decks, and Section 3.10, Projections and Yards As It Relates to Lot Coverage Landscaping Planer Boxes and Retaining Walls, While Correcting the Use of the Terms Yard and Setback in the Zoning Ordinance of the City of St. Joseph, Michigan, Based on the Factors Set Forth Under Section 22.3 of the Zoning Ordinance.
Support.
Any public comment on the matter? All right, Abby, call the roll. Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
No.
All right, thank you. And item?
Can I make one quick comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to say, I still have concern about the unintended consequences of all of our. And I think I, I think I hear where Michael's going with the question. I've been, I've done work since in the 25 years I've been in the city, had to go in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals twice. It is an arduous process that's more than the $600. You have to hire, you know, your architect, bring him in, have a long explanation. I'd like us to work towards a process more of a cursory review than a really formal, hard review because I think there are some instances where it just requires a little bit of common sense, and there's a little bit of uniqueness to the situation. And to ask someone to pay that $600 and bring in professionals and go through that process on something that could be looked at in a more 30,000-foot view way, I'd like us to have a secondary process, a preliminary process, before you go on to a hard review that maybe is less costly and less difficult.
A lot of our applicants, with the exception of if you're doing new construction, they, they're fine doing their own drawings. We do accept those, so that does help with the cost. And we do, we'll probably do a newsletter article and a handout just reminding people of what, you know, two feet and why, and retaining walls. And retaining walls only need a permit if they're greater than four feet in height.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, that moves us along to item number 18, Wayfinding Fabrication Contractor.
Greg, we've got one more before you. So this was an agenda item that we added today, and far from my favorite agenda item that I have brought to the City Commission. As you likely recall, in just our last meeting, we brought you a recommendation to move forward with a wayfinding contractor. Sorry, Tess, this was added late if you had already.
I just have the, I have the agenda that we plugged in. I'm just wondering if I missed it.
That should be on it.
It is.
Just scrolling down.
Page number 137? Page number, okay. Sorry, guys, I just want to make sure I'm referencing the same thing.
I can also give you my haircut if that's helpful.
Do you want to share one?
I have to refresh it.
I'll do it, yeah.
Yeah, 137.
No?
Mine either.
No.
No.
I, I think we used the one off the thumb drive.
That should be the most current. I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Thank you.
Okay, we, that's okay. We got it, we got it. So, in our last meeting, we brought you a recommendation to go forward with Valley City Signs for the fabrication and installation for wayfinding. They had responded to a proposal, an RFP, that we put out in December with a due date initially of December 24 that was then extended to early January. We opened four proposals. They were not the low bid, they were the second lowest bidder. We did our due diligence, and we ultimately recommended going forward with, with Valley City. And you guys approved it. We let Valley City know that they had won the contract. We had not yet signed the contract, however, when we discovered that we had missed a submission. So there was a fifth vendor that had submitted a packet for the wayfinding fabrication and installation work that for reasons I can't completely articulate, although I'm happy to discuss it if it's helpful, was missed at the time of the bid opening. They had actually submitted early in December. When we pushed out the date, we suspected that it got separated from the other four that came in later. And for whatever reason, it was found last week. And of course, because things like this are never easy, we opened it up. We decided. are never easy, we opened it up. We decided we were going to treat it the same way we treated all the others. And we found that in fact, it was a very, very competitive bid from a vendor that has worked with Corbin Design previously, they think highly of, and it is $60,000 less than the Valley City proposal that we had accepted. I see that the, the attachments did not come through here, so I apologize. I don't know, we are having a heck of a time with our agenda making software, but we are talking about $289,000 versus $238,000. Sorry, that attachment isn't there.
Can you repeat that, Emily?
298,000 versus 238,000. So, you know, this is not a position that anyone wants to be in. I've said I've been in government, city government for almost 20 years, and this has never happened to me once. But, you know, things like this happen. We have been working very closely with city attorney Schmidt, who has guided us on how to handle this. We have been very careful to do all of the same due diligence with this missed proposal from Fairmont Sign Company. We've gone through all of the same steps that we went through with Valley City and with the other low bidder from the original process. We reviewed their packet with Corbin Design. We did a phone call with them. We scored the same way we did previously. And then ultimately, we recommended that we move forward with Fairmont to the DDA in the DDA meeting this morning. Because they're $60,000 lower, the DDA wanted us to do one last sort of confirmation that there was nothing missed, that we weren't going to have change orders, and recommended that if everything sort of checked out, that we do go forward with Fairmont and rescind the approval of Valley City Signs. We did that phone call today jointly with Corbin Design and got the thumbs up from everyone that indeed this is a really viable, strong proposal and it will save us $60,000, which means we can afford to do our full wayfinding package. And so what we have for you today is a recommendation that we rescind the approval of Valley City and move forward with a contract with Fairmont for this wayfinding fabrication and installation.
Thank you. Yeah. Well, I sat on the DDA and I heard this discussion very thoroughly this morning. I got all my questions answered. So what other questions do commissioners have?
Did I hear you say you've already had preliminary conversation with Valley City Signs?
I reached out to Valley City Signs who, you know, we had told them they were chosen. The very first thing we did was reach out to them and tell them to stop working. We let them know what happened. And yes, I have been on the phone with them a few times, so they are aware. One of the things that we're going to continue to talk about with the DDA is whether we can compensate them for their work. They have done some preliminary engineering designs that we think we can purchase that deliverable from them, which, you know, I'm sure that Fairmont will still want to do their own, but we want to make Valley City whole and we think it will be beneficial for Fairmont to sort of get that head start.
Did they give you an estimate as to what that number is?
They have not. Corbin did, but I have not gotten it from Valley City yet. I think it would be, you know, about $5,000 off the, you know, back of an envelope.
And it's kind of in Corbin's. I mean, they're sort of the experts here in what that would be.
Correct.
If we move forward with this, can we add a cap dollar amount that would go to Valley City or you'd come back and advise us? Or is there a capped amount?
You can certainly do that, or we can come back and advise you. They are working on putting together what that amount would be. I don't have it yet. We can do that. We can also pull it from the DDA budget. If you want it to come back here, that's fine with me. However you want to approach it.
I'd just like to know, I hate to approve something that doesn't have a value to it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Are we approving?
That part's not part of the motion.
That's not part of the motion. You don't need to approve anything related to Valley City tonight other than to rescind the, the approval of their contract. We can come back separately when we have more information to figure out how we approve moving forward with, with making them whole.
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
Okay.
I move to rescind the offer to Valley City Signs and approve the Fairmont Sign Company proposal for wayfinding fabrication and installation in the amount of $238,502. Support?
Any public comment?
I just have a question, Brooke, too. If, if this goes forward, we would also probably want to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Fairmont, subject to city attorney approval.
Oh, that's not in this motion?
No.
Yeah.
Do we need to add that language?
I would, I would add that language as part of the motion and.
All right. So I move to rescind the offer to Valley City Signs and approve the Fairmont Sign Company proposal for wayfinding fabrication and installation in the amount of $238,502 and to approve the city manager to sign any relevant contracts.
At the? Subject to?
Subject to city attorney review.
Okay.
Yep, support.
Support. And a public comment?
Yes, could you just give a quick explanation on what signs are that you're proposing to have?
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to. These are the wayfinding signs that I think you may have seen before, Gloria. These are signs that the DDA has been working on for about two years. We entered into an agreement with Corbin Design, oh, probably in late 2022 or early 2023, and have had a stakeholder group that's been working to get these designed. And we've had a few public input sessions. They've also been on WSJM and in the Herald Palladium. And so these are about wayfinding to help visitors find their way around the city of St. Joe, to get to sort of key destinations, whether that's the beach or Crassel or Curious Kids or whatever it is. It's to sort of guide folks to their destinations and do it in the most efficient way possible. It will also have signage that identifies Lyons Park Beach or Tuscornia Beach, names the parking lots, and just helps to make it easier to navigate through the city of St. Joseph.
Any other public comment? All right, Abby called the roll. Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number 19, Special Event 50th Anniversary of Vietnam War.
The Marion County Veterans Services is requesting the whole special event on March 29th to recognize the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War. The event would be on the 29th from 10 to 11 in the morning with Lake Love Bar. I understand Maureen Adams from Marion County Veterans Services is here. Do you'd like to help and?
Hi, I'm Maureen Adams. I'm the director of the Marion County Veterans Service Office. This is the 50th year commemoration of the end of the Vietnam War. And we would like to do a ceremony in front of the Vietnam War Memorial or Monument for our veterans here in Marion County. We did do one that we cobbled together very quickly. Last year, we had 42 veterans come out for a pinning ceremony. I would anticipate we're probably going to get 100 to 125 veterans to come out for this. I would like to say, depending on the number of veterans, it may take longer than the hour, depending on how many veterans come out for us to pin.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
It's, it's a very well, well-done event. A lot of swag goes out with it, but each veteran has pinned in recognition of their service. Also veterans, family members or spouses who had lost a veteran can come out and be pinned as well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. I did not, I don't think that my counterpart Eric filled out the application form. And one thing I don't think that we put in there is we would like to also entertain bringing in chairs for the veterans. So probably be 100, we'll rent the chairs, but probably 100 seats if that's allowable.
Is that needing to have any amendments to the?
I think it's okay. We can work out on it at a staff level as long as you're supportive. Greg, I don't see any concern on your face. Okay, I think we're good.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission?
No, sounds like a great event. Thank you for bringing it up.
What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the special event for the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War Memorial celebration. I don't know what to call it, sorry.
Memorations? Yeah.
As presented?
As presented, yes.
Support?
Public comment on the matter? Abby called the roll. Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
All right, good luck with the event. Item number 19, special, that was that one, 20, Whitcomb Tower Class C Liquor License.
The Whitcomb Towers are here today to answer any questions that I can. The Whitcomb Towers 509 Ship Street in the city of St. Joseph is applying for a Class C liquor license from the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs to Liquor Control Commission. Mr. Singh, who I spoke to, must obtain approval from the city commission for a new on-premises liquor license as part of the application process for a Class C liquor license and banquet facility permit for the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. And they are here today to speak further about why they would like this license.
Hello, my name is Sue Veldman and I am the Director of Marketing and Community Outreach at the Whitcomb Senior Living Tower. It is my honor and my pleasure to work for the senior living tower. It is a historic landmark and we, and I say we collectively as the ownership, the CEO, which is Jay Singh there, he, he is committed to the architecture and sustaining the building and making sure that we keep the historic landmark in really good operating. So they've spent a lot of time working on the infrastructure of the building over the last three years. They took ownership in 2022. And now we're moving inside. The master plan kind of is to continue to enhance not only the building, but the actual, the senior living community lifestyle for our residents. And there have been a lot of changes in trends, I would say, over the years for senior living communities. And we, we feel like, you know, while we want to honor the past, we definitely want to stay current with the future. And folks who are thinking of retiring, who are looking for senior communities are, they're looking for more amenities. And so we are trying to stay current with that. And in keeping with that, we're focusing a lot more on hospitality, kind of the hospitality mindset for our residents. They're used to a certain level of hospitality in the community and the lifestyle that they used to lead. And so sometimes that transition into senior living can be difficult because there's pretty drastic change. And we were seeking to kind of mitigate that, I would say, by offering drinks to our, to our residents. Quite honestly, I mean, when they come for dinner, they would love to have a glass of wine or they would love to have a beer. When their families come to have dinner with them, you know, we would love to be able to provide that for their families as well. We're not throwing ragers or anything like that. So I just, I think that's kind of the background of what we're looking at. And I have some research here that I could share with you, you know, just from like environments for aging. For some time now, senior living communities have been shifting away from the traditional institutional models in our more community-centric and hospitality-focused. And really in the new era, the mantra of location, location, location doesn't mean, I mean, it means significant amount when you're a senior living community, because, you know, while they do get out and they do enjoy our community, they stay in our community an awful lot. So the things that we can provide within is definitely helpful to our residents. So fine dining and I guess I would say fine dining and upscale experiences is what we're seeking to provide our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. What questions does the commission have?
If the state ultimately granted this, would this have spillover rights to the event center that's outside? Do you be able to serve beer and wine on the terrace that's outside?
Sure. We, we actually do use the terrace outside for our senior, for our senior residents. On Wednesdays, we will often have picnics in the summer and we would like to be able to serve office out there, too.
Sure. I'm just going back to, you know, previous owners, there had been a period of time where that was an events, that was a space that was, that was, you could lease out to the public.
Sure.
And I don't know if that's in your current plans. And if it is, does that license transcend that type of event?
No, that license, this is separate from that license. This is truly for our resident
Okay.
facility. Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
We talk a lot about housing and the lack of housing and how people do want to age in place. And so I love that this is turning into a space that people will desire to want to go to and retire and have all the amenities. What is your occupancy rate there?
We can, we have, well, we're still renovating, so we have the capacity of about 130 rooms. And we're currently probably around 80 residents with about 15 rooms that we just recently finished and are available for rent. And then the rest are all in the works.
Wow.
Yeah, there are some really cool historical things behind the walls. Not going to lie, it's pretty cool.
Do you give tours there?
Yes, I do. And I invite you all to come and tour.
Great.
If you do have literature, I'd love to have it. I can give you my email if you want to send that along.
I'd be happy to share that.
Great. Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Sue, I appreciate the hospitality context in that. I think that that was just important to understand. And it makes, it makes so much sense as well.
For sure.
Well, what is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to recommend the application of Whitcomb Towers for Class C liquor license at 509 Ship Street in St. Joseph, Michigan, be considered for approval by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. Support?
All right, public comment on the matter? Seeing none. Abby called the roll. Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
Can I give you my card?
Yes.
Here you go. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right, that moves us along to item number 21, Public Hearing 101 Broad Street Amendment to the Plan Unit Development in Reeds, Rights. Wally and Gertz? We'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:48 PM.
This is a request from Wally and Gertz and Reeds as the business owner of this concessioneer at the Silver Beach. The property is located in the W Water Recreation District, which requires a plan unit development. So this is what would be the third amendment to the PUD that was established. Properties on 22 acres and is improved with public beach and several outbuildings, which include the concession stand in this picture, which is on the left-hand side of the gray building or tannish color building. Tenant is proposing to put in a 2,800 square foot paved area on the east side of the building. If you go up a couple more slides, I think you can see that. Keep going. This, the proposed improvements are the patio on the east side of the building, between the building and the parking lot, along with the seating for 22 people, I believe, and two sun shades, and then two cargo containers for the sale of merchandise and additional food-type items. And then a food truck, which would be owned and operated by the tenant. They're not proposing that it'll change out on a weekly basis or anything and stay there for, not for the entire summer. In addition to the oversized Michigan hand, hand tronic chair for picture ops that's located in the sand area. The planning commission held a public hearing on January, or on February, or January 2nd unanimously, unanimously recommended approval of the proposed. unanimously, unanimously recommended approval of the proposed improvements. They believe that the improvements are not blocking any more of the lake than what was there already. They're adjacent to the existing building. It would be an improvement for those visiting the property in addition to providing some accessibility opportunities for dining in a more convenient manner. What's there right now? And then it was also suggested they do one of those mats to get you out to the chair for people who have difficulty walking in the sand. It is adjacent to the playground area that is under construction and previously approved in early 2024. As part of this, this property is located in the an overlay district, the Lake Bluff Scenic, Scenic View Overlay District, which has maximum height elevations for anything that's constructed.
All of these items exceed that. So as part of it, they're requesting a waiver from nine feet, one inch to 11 feet, seven inches, and nothing is above the existing concession stand on the property. We did have one person speak at the public hearing and they had a question regarding the application. And if the applicant had the ability to make the request, because the property is owned by Barien County, Barien County did sign off on the application. And they are also here, the applicant is here, along with representatives from Barien County, if there are additional questions.
Is there an applicant presentation along with this, or this is the presentation?
That's their presentation. If you want more information, they can, Anne can come up here, or a builder Mike can come up, if you have more to add that I might have missed.
That's pretty much it.
Okay. All right. How about commission questions, comments?
I'll be honest, looking, I'm excited about what this could look like down at Silver Beach. I think there's tremendous opportunity. But I think that we would be remiss if we didn't consider the conversations that are still ongoing about the safety concerns by Silver Beach. I understand that you can look at these functions separately, but realistically with a community like ours in an area like that, every single conversation is tied into, is tied into that safety concern that we have.
To kind of echo off, you know, Commissioner Ory's statement there. One thing I've learned about the, the PUDs is you have to consider all of the effects within the PUD, you know, when you're making changes to the PUDs. So in this one, I know there's, you know, there's, there's some progress being made and some ideas that, you know, to alleviate the concerns. And I'm just, I don't see much of that included, any of that included in this. This is, you know, focused on, you know, that concession area, but we know that this is going, while it's being constructed, it's going to have adverse effects on the traffic. And I don't see anything to address the concerns of what does that look like and anything in this? And I just just don't see much of that in here to be able to move forward with it as is.
Just to clarify, you don't see much of comment on the, how it's going to address the traffic?
Correct. Yeah. Because making changes to any of this is going to cause, you know, construction, which is going to cause, you know, traffic obstacles. And, you know, better concession areas is going to lead to more traffic. And I just don't see an addressing of what's the plans included in this, you know, to accommodate, you know, for those, what, what I would hope, you know, would be an increase in, you know, use and revenues and all of that good stuff, you know, traffic and use of this. That's going to offset, you know, and draw more people in. I don't see it addressed, you know, how are we going to offset that additional and accommodate that additional traffic? And from what I understand, there's, you know, some ideas, you know, being proposed and some progress, but it's not in here. So I would like to wait until we have that part of the plan, along with the great concession, you know, this looks good to me, but it's just not everything.
I know Emily and Steve, from the city perspective, have been part of conversation with the county. Who's here from the county that could speak to me? Maybe just kind of an update of where that goes, because I think I'm, I'm hearing the concern here is, you know, we already, we know on those seven to 10 busiest days, we have what would have to be characterized as gridlock, right? There's a lot of concern about getting safety vehicles down below the bluff if there's an emergency. Cars are packed in both directions. If you wanted to make way for them to get down there, you couldn't. I just wonder, I know there's ongoing discussions. Maybe you could update the commission as to where that stands and how we might see an improvement of traffic flows this next year. And that kind of then dovetails into, to this conversation.
All right. I'm Jill Adams, the Barien County Parks Director, and we have been making some good strides and especially I was, I was actually very encouraged by our work group meeting that we had very open dialogue, putting ideas on the table, going through the pros and cons. And it's still our goal to, for the county to work directly with the city to help manage traffic and pedestrians below the bluff. There are a lot of attractions below the bluff, and we know that it's going to take a number of different things to ensure that the traffic and the pedestrians are managed properly. We have a draft of a minor PUD amendment for some changes made at our entrance to help with traffic flow into the park. And that will be coming to the city soon. So we are presenting a, a minor amendment application for some improvements within the park to address some of those issues.
Could you just give us an idea of what, what those are? I'm just curious, just, just so we have an understanding. I know there'll be a formal presentation later, but if you could just touch on the high points?
Sure. At the last city commission meeting, I presented those ideas and the, the main physical change for 2025 will be at the entrance to the park. Inside of the park, we are going to extend the second full lane to allow for more stacking of vehicles within the park so we can manage them better.
I can point out where that is. Tell me when to stop. I'm trying. This one? Yeah. So here's the entrance right now, and it's one lane. They'll extend it, widen it out on the east, north side of it to get, so you can get more stacking in there. So two lanes?
Two full lanes. As we worked with Walker Consultants and went over some of the physical and technological changes that we'd like to do this. Working with Walker, working with DLZ to make these plans, and the construction will be approximately $100,000 investment in traffic related issues. So we are making some investments towards these short-term items and moving into the longer term items.
In that second lane, will there, I know there's only one gatehouse, but will there be somebody taking, taking money on the, on the other lane as well?
Correct. Yes.
So two pay stations in, in essence.
And Jill, that's what you presented when you were here at the last meeting.
Yes.
So you guys have seen the map of that previously.
And that's, that's coming. I, I wonder if we've got another amendment request coming, you know, could we not just do them both at once? And maybe hold off on this one until the next one comes so that we can consider it all together? Which would include then, you know, because my, my main issue with this is this doesn't address, you know, for me, it's just, it's missing that traffic component. And how do we offset what we hope on our planning by improving, you know, the concession area of this, you know, we are hoping to drive it up and make it busier. And what this current amendment request lacks is how does that offset then the safety requests of the more traffic and all of that? And if we are going to have another amendment request coming soon from you guys to reflect what you guys have been talking to us about, why does it not make more sense to do both of the PUD amendments together?
Jump in. That one is a minor amendment, which means that it can be approved at the staff level. So Jill presented it at the last meeting. We wanted to make sure that it was presented along with the findings from the Walker study before staff moved anything forward. But following that presentation, we had intended to approve it at the staff level. That isn't to say it couldn't come back if you'd like for it to. But it is, it does meet the threshold for a minor amendment.
In, in your conversations with Walker, and you said this was one of the things that they suggested, did they, did they offer a guess as to how much of an improvement this might be of 10% faster, 20% faster? Did they, they quantify what the improvement would be?
There were some quantifying factors in their report. I, I actually don't have the report in front of me during this meeting. I had it at the last meeting. I apologize.
Yeah, I apologize. I wasn't at that one.
I, I would encourage you to consider it at this meeting. We've, summer is upon us and any, it goes so quick. And I know that Anne needs to order some of the equipment in order for this approved. Your commission, your planning commission approved this project. It, if we can get moving on this project for 2025, we'll come soon to you. We're working with DLZ to bring that other minor amendment application and payment to you. These things can be done in 2025.
Before we open. So I'd just like to say that, my name is Anne Reets. I've been down at the, thank you all for listening to us. But I've been down as the concessionaire since 2012, so 13 years. This will be my 14th year. And as I've seen the traffic patterns or of the customers from a customer standpoint, I kind, I feel like, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I feel like the draw, we're enhancing the customer's experience at this point. We're not adding a Ferris wheel to guide the, the traffic. We're enhancing what we already have right now. The building is maxed out as far as like the services that we're providing. We're providing a lot of towels and sunscreen and buckets and it, we're just crammed in there without demolishing that building. We're gonna, we're, we're just expanding our operations from the inside to the outside. So right now, we have the same amount of tables, except they're scattered all over. Right now, our trash pickup is out in the open, whereas we propose to cover that up. So the appearance is going to be a nice present, presentable facade for customers as they're approaching the park. So the other point is, is that our selling window is on the west side. We don't have anything on the east side. So when we close our door for the night because there's no one else on the beach and we go walk to our car, there's still a ton of people. They're walking to the pier, they're having ice cream, they're going to the you know, the park or they're going to a concert. So there's still a lot of activity and they want a bottle of water. So I'm not saying, I, I don't feel like improving this is adding that much more traffic. It's not, I, I think the traffic issue, it's separate from this. So, I mean, in my opinion. So.
I think the work that we're proposing to do is like Anne said, more to enhance the customer's experience. It's not existing customers. It's not necessarily bringing more traffic, road traffic from above the bluff down to the beach. I don't think people are going to drive down to the beach to park to go get a towel, get a bottle of water, or to eat at Wally and Gertz. They're servicing people who are already at the beach, who have already parked for the beach attraction. It's not pulling more customers in as a restaurant experience to sit down and eat. There's minimal seating down there right now. And like Anne said, it's kind of scattered.
There's no ADA seating, which we want to add. There's no ADA compliant ordering window, which they need to order their food. There's, there's, there's customer enhancements. There's, there's the shade, we're, we're offering like the shade for people that need to get out of the sun. So I mean, for us, we're taking some of the operation out of the building and exposing it to the outside traffic. So they know it's there.
Also separating some merchandise sales from the, if people don't want to wait in a long line to buy a beach towel chair or get sunscreen. There's lost revenue from not wanting to stand in line for 15 minutes to grab a quick item. It's a quicker exchange for a customer going to the beach that doesn't want food or beverage to kind of fast track that experience.
Right.
And I think, Anne, Mike, I think I completely agree with your, your assessment, right, of how the, how the concession is used. And I do think it would enhance the experience down there. But right now, especially when we've been given like a two-year timeframe from Barien County in terms of when like certain parking things are going to be addressed or revisited, it feels difficult to introduce any other variant to what's happening on Silver, on Silver Beach if we're truly going to fix that parking problem.
And we've been working on this for quite some time, and we did hire Walker Consultants to help us do that. $20,000 to help get us some ideas and move forward. We are investing in some of the things that they are recommending on a short-term level in 2025 with further ideas that need more research for future years, for long-term. So like I said, with all of that, we are looking at $100,000 investment specifically on, on helping manage the traffic. And the parking study that the, or the traffic study that the city did on pedestrians going through that intersection actually really gives us a lot of good data on what we're working on and where the cars are actually going. So we do feel like the investments that we're making, short-term and long-term, are going to be beneficial as well as the encouragement I got from our work group with the city and some of the ideas city staff has recommended and not, not recommended, but thrown on the table and that we're working through some of those ideas. We always talk about what our goal is, and we also want to try to define what success means. And we're still working on that.
Yeah, I just would like to address what you said, Anne. I, I hear what you're saying about you think they're two separate issues and it's not really a it's not going to create more traffic. It's an enhanced experience. On the flip side, I can tell you, because I can show you on my phone, I've spent about four and a half hours since Thursday on the phone and fielded 40 separate phone calls from concerned residents that it will add traffic below the bluff. And they are concerned that just going to exacerbate a situation that, you know, it's, it's not comfortable for a good portion of the summer, but there are seven to 10 days a year where the traffic is really a safety issue. If we have an emergency call below the bluff, if somebody has an anaphylactic shock or a heart attack, and we can't get an emergency service vehicle down there because of the gridlock, it's a problem. And if there is a, these people believe that this is an enhancement to the park and therefore will drive more traffic. It just exacerbates the situation. So I think, you know, I kind of like what Michael said, if we could revisit this, maybe, and we have a meeting again in three weeks on the 24th. If, if part of the proposal could be what, what the county's been working on, what they've been working with the city on, and maybe that could be part of the overall proposal. It would be easier for us to dispel those concerns that a lot of residents have, that this is just really going to make the situation worse. I like the concept. I love everything about it. I think it will enhance the experience down there. We just want to make sure we're doing it in a responsible way. And we don't expose ourselves to a safety risk because the park continues to be a bigger and better attraction, which inherently will attract more people. We just want to dovetail that with how are we going to address the, the traffic? Not so much the parking, but the traffic. And, and how can we make sure on those seven to 10 busiest days that if we do have an emergency, we can properly service it?
Mike, for what it's worth, I just want to jump in and say we had a really great working session, like Jill said, last week. Tim, Steve, Greg and I met with Jill and her team, as well as Sheriff Height and his deputy. And we had a great conversation about ways that we might sort of re-envision traffic flow for the summer of 2025. It's we're meeting again next week and I, I don't want to speak for you, Jill, but I wonder if we couldn't put together. I, I don't want to speak for you, Jill, but I wonder if we couldn't put together um, sort of a high-level proposal of what we're thinking about, how the traffic might flow differently, what we might do with entrances, other things that we're brainstorming, how we might handle the pedestrian, um, traffic and bring that to you to help sort of
Yeah.
give, give the commission a better sense of where we're headed.
You know, and on that point, I want to make it clear, I don't, I don't put all the onus of the difficulty down there in the county. We, you know, we have issues we need to address in the city. It's, it's a joint problem and we need joint solutions. So it's, it's encouraging that you two are working together closely and maybe have already forged some ideas that could turn into an action plan. We just have to, we just have to address it and make sure safety is, is, is primary. So if, if, I, I would be happy to, to table it and revisit it in three weeks with a more comprehensive plan, knowing that the underlying plan here and the concept, I'm a hundred percent for. Uh, I think it's great. I think it's going to be great for the community. So I, I would just feel better about knowing what we're going to do this year to mitigate some of those, those seven to 10 really, really difficult days when that traffic backs up and there's no access below the hill.
So we are still in a public hearing right now in order to make a decision whether we table, approve, deny. That's outside of the public hearing, correct?
Right.
Okay. So for questions, comments, anything for the applicants, anything else before we move to public comment? Nothing else from the commissioners?
No.
Okay. Uh, public comment, please.
So now we have five concession locations here in around the city of St. Joe's. Is this one or is it six one or is it different rules on this?
That, that is separate. That's on the county property. Um, where the concession stand already is, it's the same vendor that's proposing to expand and offer that.
It, it's the county's property, so that would be a question for the county. Because it's not our property.
Thank you. Please.
I commend you on wanting to expand this. I'll call it the backside. Wanted to add place for merchandise. I don't like the idea of having containers. I, I think you have, we have one of the most beautiful beaches in, in the whole state. And I just feel like the containers are going to distract from that. What we really need is take the existing building, somebody, the county, the city, I don't know if it's us, expand it, open it up on the backside. Cause I walked past it a hundred times, you know, in here and I don't know if the front's open, you know, how long the lines are. It'd be nice if the backside was also open, giving you more room to do what you want to do. Open a side part of it or merchandise. Keep that area pure as it is today. You have beautiful buildings, well architected and built. I just feel like the containers are going to distract it. They need a better facility to do their job and to deliver to us. Okay. I like the shaded area. Based upon the pictures, it's not enough shaded area. Okay. You got a couple of triangles that said we got shade, but most of the tables are not underneath it. We need to do something better than that. So I think figuring out a better solution for shade, investing in the building itself, opening it up on the parking lot side or on the backside. So people can walk by, get drawn into it. And that can actually be opened later in the evening as the beach clears out. And the rest of the people are showing up for some, you know, uh, the sunset. There's lots of people to go down for that. So that's my thought. I just feel like it's solving a problem that should be solved a different way. And it would be better for all of us from an architectural and visualization. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Larry Bowman, 360 Way Street. This kind of reminded me of the playground where they said they'd be doing something to help the flow of traffic, attack flow. And here it is three years later and they haven't done one thing. You know, and now they're saying they want to do this and they'll promise this and this. I'm not quite sure. You know, in 2022, the county Silver Beach raised $868,000. 2023, $911,000. And 2024, $934,000. So this is not a, which is actually 83% of all the parks, county parks, is 83% of what they all bring in. And, you know, the only way that you're going to stop the backup flow is to build a lot faster. To get it done, then the city can take over, uh, directing traffic out, out of the county. But, you know, and like I think it was Mike said, safety. I've been down there at one time, you know, in the 35 years I've lived there. And I saw an ambulance trying to get into the condos. They couldn't. So they took their medicine bag and off they went running down the road to get into, to save somebody who's having a heart attack. Now, I mean, it is safety. It's very, very safety. There were 80,000 cars in park, the county park last year, 80,000. And that doesn't count the backup people, you know, so it's, it's a shame that we are going through the same thing now as we did with the playground. And it's time to, to make them come to figure that they gotta get traffic in there. Get it parked, not by paying in entry and that second lane, so you can add six cars. Well, what's that going to do? Not going to do anything. If anything, it's going to even stall more. So you know, I, I want the commission to, you know, hold their guns and say, look, we've been through this before. You know, it's been three years since they set the playground. It's been three years and nothing has been done to help the backflow. Not one thing. And, uh, yes, I, we, we like the playground. I know we're going to like the concession stand, but it's just silly to keep letting the county take advantage of that and kick the can down the road and not do anything. It's time. It's time to put their, you know, feet to the heat and, and get things done. Put meters in there. Meters goes to 150,000. So I'm saying is that, you know, they made, they made $934,000 last year. So it's just, it just goes on and on and on, which it shouldn't be. You know, county should be working with the city because we are working with them. We give them everything they want and they don't come back with anything that helps the city. So that's my comments.
Thank you. Other public comment? Okay. Next in the public hearing is any kind of applicant response? Anything further that the applicants want to add to the discussion? Nothing. Nothing. All right. Um, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:18 PM. And now for commission discussion. I guess I want to just have my thoughts on the record. The, yes, there is a traffic problem. Yes, there is a safety problem down below the bluff in front of Silver Beach that has been a problem for many years, um, that hasn't changed. I have a hard time wrapping my brain around that these particular changes are going to create a significant influx of traffic. I think there will be maybe slightly more. And I think to your point about the concession or the construction, maybe that would jam things up. But I don't know. When I look at these legal points that we're supposed to look at, can you take construction into consideration or is it the final product that you're looking at as far as congestion?
You can, you could look at the construction, but that it would be a temporary situation. So I don't.
You look at the permanent changes that are going to be made in order to make that decision?
Right. And there may be some things to address the temporary part of the construction process, but it's the, the permanent, um, change that you'd be looking at primarily.
Right. So when I, I just try to look at things very legally and when I look at these different, um, aspects that we have to hit, um, I don't see a huge change in the influx of traffic. It's there. It is a problem. I'm not denying that. The safety is a problem and I see city and county staff working together in this subcommittee. I'm hearing very good things about the progress they've made. They are putting in consultants. They are doing studies. They are working. And I'm hearing that the relationship is positive and I'm happy to hear that. We have a change in administration. Um, and I think that, you know, she's only had over 90 days, just over 90 days to get some things done. And I'm excited to see where that work group goes from here. Um, I have faith in our team that they are pushing for this issue to be resolved. Also, I agree with the applicants that the changes are enhancing and not necessarily drawing a whole lot more to the beach. So I, I hate the idea of hindering a business in, in lieu, in, because we have a city and a county problem. Um, they want to enhance their business and I want to support that. Um, I hate to get in the way of their business plan just because we are working on an issue. So I'm, maybe tabling it right now is the right thing, but I just want to put those thoughts out there that we are looking at these changes and not the overall problem that's been in place for a decade. Other thoughts? There was mentioned, go ahead.
The improvements, Emily, that you mentioned, um, you know, and, and things that you're discussing, uh, those things you mentioned are at a staff level of approval, right? So.
So, um, it's, so there are a couple of things. One is the county had presented in the last meeting, the additional lane. Um, that is a minor PUD amendment and that can be done at the staff level, level. And then separately, we kicked off this sort of working group to talk about other changes that we can make specifically for the summer 2025 season. And so those are staff, um, also staff level decisions. I think we can certainly bring them back here. Um, but we are talking about, we'll bring in our traffic engineer when the time is right. But we are talking about, um, how we might change the flow of traffic. We talked about the entrances that we might be able to utilize at Silver Beach. Uh, we talked about how public safety, um, might be able to help with directing traffic. And we talked about changes we might be able to make to the pedestrian flow of traffic. To sort of, you know, help ensure that pedestrians are moving in the desired direction and not clogging vehicular traffic. So I don't think any of those are things that have to come back to the city commission for approval. Um, but that's not to say that we couldn't come back and, and brief you on what we are working through.
I ask because mostly, you know, those things, you know, and to, I guess, the best of your knowledge and the things that you have discussed with the county and, you know, I don't know if Jill wants to answer this too. But whatever the things that you guys have, you know, come to your agreements and brainstormed and will continue to over the next couple of weeks. If those are all things that are at staff level improvement, you know, then they can just, in theory, just go do them quickly. Implement whatever things that you guys come up with over the next several months before the season starts. And everybody needs to just be focusing on, let's enjoy the beach and provide the best experience possible. I have a much better time coming to terms with, I don't want to see multiple approvals, right? I don't want to try to say yes to a piece of this now and then have to in two months, another piece and another piece. You know, and especially if some of these things, uh, can be approved at the staff level. And if they are occurring within the county park, things that you guys have direct day-to-day control over, that you can flip a switch and the experiment is activated, we're trying something. Knowing that those things can be done in the background and approved and managed by staff, you know, our new city manager and Jill working in coordination. I can come to the ability to separate, you know, that from the request before us today, which is, is very specific to a concessionaire. You know, I think there's, I do want, you know, just my opinion to be said on the building itself, you know, the, I think there, there can be more improvements on the, the building that you referenced. Um, you know, that's, that's part of the county property, but these are, these are very specific. These are the vendor, you know, making these very specific requests. And I would hate to, you know, I too would hate to see that uh, held up as, as part of something that's a larger picture. So knowing that progress can be made and tangible things can happen before the doors open. I, I, I have the ability to move forward on this.
The thoughts?
I do feel a responsibility to the residents of St. Joe, who, like Mike said, have been extremely vocal and extremely communicative with us about the, the real impact that the, um, that summer traffic at Silver Beach has. And so I understand, you know, how to separate these things and I want to make that very clear. But it just seems like as a duty to our residents, it makes a lot of sense right now to have a complete picture. Both of this concession air, um, upgrade and parking before we move forward with it. I, I think they need to be together.
Any other thoughts? What is the pleasure of the commission?
I moved to table this agenda item for the next city commission meeting.
Is that something you need to support on or is that just kind of direction?
You do.
Do we have a second?
I'm sorry, just so it's clear, so this is a, um, Michael's is a motion to table it.
Until the next city commission meeting.
Okay.
To allow time for more information to come forward? What, what would you want to see different between?
Yeah, I don't know that that part necessarily needs to be in the motion, but yes, that would be the logic and, you know, my expect, my expectation and reason behind making the motion was I would, I would hope to see some progress then if, um, I'm making the motion with the intention of if we're not comfortable saying yes or no tonight, then the only thing to do is hope that, uh, we can have some more information on how the bigger picture is going to come together three weeks from now, uh, and then make the decision then.
Okay. I'm not hearing a second.
That would be my intention in supporting it as well. I just want to make sure that it, that's a part of the motion. I'm not sure how. Yes, to table it. I'm agreeing with Michael because we need more information.
Are you making a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I was having difficulty.
Any public comments on the motion? Yes.
I would like some clarification on exactly what you would like. I could send it to you this week if you'd like. Just go get on top of it.
I think
Specific?
Specific as, um, I, I, I know you mentioned that Walker had given you some information about what introducing those two lanes would do. If I can take that back to residents and say, you know, instead of 40 seconds a car, this is going to make it 10 seconds a car. As much hard and fast as we can have is helpful because when we talk in these big variables and safety is a concern, we all have words that are, that are activating us. And I think we need to just look at the numbers of what that is going to look like and what the experience is going to be down there.
I think this pause would, you know, keep in mind, we get these, um, agenda packets on Friday afternoon. And if you just happen to have time to, to spend four hours or so going through a 250-page packet on Friday afternoon, then by Saturday morning, you know, questions to ask. In my case, I wasn't able to do that until Saturday afternoon. And then trying to track down, um, um, Steve Newbecker, our public safety director and others in the city, just to try to get feedback. I've had some brief conversations, as I mentioned, about four and a half hours of conversations with residents this weekend. And I just feel like there's, there's a little bit of uncertainty. There's a little bit of uncomfortableness. I think everybody is, is in favor of the plan in general. I just think if we can just hit the pause for, you know, we, we meet again in three weeks, get a little bit more information, give us a little bit more time to have dialogue with our staff internally to make sure, uh, residents' concerns are addressed. I feel like i- if we can put that all together in three weeks, I think we would have enough information then to act, um, with confidence.
Does that answer your question?
Does that answer your question, Jill?
Okay. Okay. Great. Other public comment? All right. Abby, call the roll.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Serola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes. Thank you very much. All right. There is my agenda. That moves us on to number 22, 101 Broad Street Amendment. Nope, that was, uh, 23, Aetna Resolution. Lost my agenda. Here it is.
The City of St. Joseph purchasing policy allows for the purchase of products through a sole source procurement process. The Public Works Department utilizes that sole source procurement when we're purchasing water meters in meter transceiver units or MXUs, which is the radio read touchpads that allows us to read the meters by driving by or walking up and putting the reader on the, on the unit to get the reads. So for over 20 years, the city has been purchasing and installing census water meters and MXUs throughout the city and authority area. This transition was done in an effort to streamline and improve the efficiency of meter reading process. The only authorized distributor of census products in the state of Michigan is Etna Supply Company of Grand Rapids. Because we replace a large number of meters and MXUs every year due to stop meters, leaks or replacements as part of construction projects. In order to perform that work quickly and efficiently and to meet demand, we keep a large inventory of meters and MXUs on hand. These purchases made over a year can far exceed the $25,000 requiring commission approval. As a result, we're requesting authorization from the commission to purchase census water meters and related parts from Etna Supply as needed in a total amount of up to 200,000 in the 2025 calendar year. So just, it's worth noting that that's in a, the calendar year, not our fiscal year. We budget $200,000 pretty much every year for the purchase of meters and meter reading, meter parts. And so it's, it's in line with what our budget is, but we're just trying to streamline that process. So we're not up here every couple of weeks making that request for, to purchase more meters.
Okay, any questions from the commission? That makes sense.
Thank you for making your processes more efficient, Greg.
Trying.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
I move to authorize the Public Works Department to purchase census water meters and related parts from Etna Supply of Grand Rapids, Michigan, source provider and only authorized distributor of census products in the state of Michigan in a total amount of up to 200,000 in 2025 as it meets the city's purchasing policy requirements for single source procurement.
Support.
Any public comment? All right, Abby, call the roll.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 24, fiscal year 25 budget amendments.
Okay. So I want to start this agenda item by talking about the next agenda item. These are linked. So if we choose not to approve the budget amendments for the general fund, then we'll pull the second one for the 401 transfer because I have those baked into the total value. We're not under any time constraints or anything, so it's not an issue. It is something to keep in mind, if you do want to not do these budget amendments, we'll just take the second one away and we'll pick that up next time. Okay, so let's start by this agenda item. If you go to the, the supporting pages, it looks like this. This is an update on where the, these three funds will be. There's a column to demonstrate the budget changes total. And then where the, the fund will end as of today with updated financial through December. So we have three funds we're changing here. Do you want me to read through these or just hit the highlights?
Highlights are fine.
Yeah. The first thing I want to mention is there is one for my department for $1,100. These are for new card readers. That is related to a new project we have coming up for taking credit card payments for BSNA. So there's, there's more to come on that, but this is the first step. We had to actually buy the physical little card readers. They're going to give residents some new ways to pay and will benefit them. There's going to be a lot on the back end that will benefit us too. But there's more news to come on that later. And then in the general fund, the big one and why I wanted to link these two agenda items is because the public safety, we had to increase the personnel lines. And I'm not saying that it's okay this happened, I'm just saying I'm not surprised. Many years working in government with public safety departments, sheriff's department in my old job. This happens when we have union contracts, retirements, and then personal changes requiring overtime. So the big thing that happened was we had two large retirement payouts. Those were not in the budget. And we don't necessarily want to always encapsulate those in the budget because I don't want the budget to dictate when someone retires. So some of the things we have to handle during your, like we're right now. The next thing that happened was the union contract negotiations changed the tier pay. That change was also not in the budget. And then lastly, due to several family issues within the public safety department, they had to increase overtime. So those three factors, required the increase to the public safety personnel lines, along with the benefits associated with that pay. Those are the highlights for the general fund. The 401 fund, I just want to touch briefly on the, the DDA surplus. That's $191,000, but really that's just fund balance that was not used. It's been allocated but not used, which is bringing it forward to this current year budget. And then the shoreline softening study, that was grant funded. So that's similar. We received some of the money and we're just bringing that forward. And then the 591 fund, the last one. The big thing here is training was a big deal. We learned through BSNA training how to do some tasks when it relates to transferring the delinquent water counts to the tax, delinquent tax. That required a lot of overtime for Brianna as we learned how to do that. A month or two later, we figured out how to do that in system. And we're going, the system will now automate that process for us. So the overtime was to learn that and then we figured out how to make it smoother going forward. If you have any other questions, let me know.
I don't have any questions, any questions from the commission?
Thanks for the additional background.
Thank you. Yeah.
You always make it so we can understand it, thank you.
Yes, what is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve these fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget amendments as presented.
Support. Any public comment? All right, Abby, call the roll.
Commissioner Serrola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes. All right, item number 25, transfer of 2023, 24, Fund Suit Capital Improvement Fund.
So we'll start by talking about, this is partially dictated by our fund balance policy. So I've included that in here because that tells us what to do. And then you may have seen this sheet in years past. I have tweaked this slightly and I want to point that out. On the, under the, where we remove values from the fund balance, the first line is the $5.9 million. And then we have a bunch of adjustments we make, the values from the audit. But the new one here is I'm removing the cemetery fund balance. And the reason why I'm doing that is in the audit itself, the cemetery fund balance is included in the general fund. But on our side, in our internal books, it is separate. So I didn't want to double count that while I'm trying to reduce the general fund balance to transfer to 401. So that's brand new to this year. Other than that, it's the same calculation as prior years. I listed where we received the values. They're from the audit or in the one case from the cemetery fund from the system. And then the calculation is that we use the 20% fund balance per the fund balance policy. Turns out that we're going to transfer from the 101 to the 401 fund, the capital projects fund, 1.536, $800. And that is, if you look on the last item, the general fund summary has that included, as does the 401 summary. So both sides are covered.
Yep.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
No.
Very clear. All right, what's the pleasure of the commission?
I move to transfer $1,536,800 from the general fund to the capital improvement fund, representing funds in excess of the target general fund balance calculated in accordance with the fund balance assignment policy.
Support.
Any public comment? All right, Abby, call the roll.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrola?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Ben. And on to the last two items, city manager comments?
Two thoughts, one isn't Ben great. I tell him all the time, but he is such a gift to the city. He really is patient and helps us understand everything. The other thing I wanted to call out in the name of patience is Greg Grouthouse has gotten more phone calls and texts from me in the last many weeks asking about the roads than I'm sure he has ever wanted in his life. And he and his team, yeah, he's agreeing. And he and his team have just been really responsive and supportive and have gotten out there at all hours of the day and night when the roads have snow or freezing ice or whatever it is. And he is great, as is his team, and I'm really appreciative.
Thank you for that. I think you did the write-up on the different types of salt that we use or the saline solution. I found that very fascinating, helpful. That all for you?
That's it.
Great, we'll move on to city commission comments. Anybody?
All talked out.
Hoping it stays cold enough for Ice Fest this weekend, so.
Yeah.
This is the weekend we want it to stay frozen off the lake.
Yeah. Yep, so in case you missed it, we had Chili Fest over the weekend. It was my first time attending, it was really good and I had 21 samples, so it was very full. Beer Fest, I went by that, looked like it was a success. So thanks to all city staff who helped make that a success. This upcoming week, Thursday, Friday is the Michigan Black Summit, so sign up for that if you haven't yet. And then the Ice Fest as well, lots going on this winter. So thanks for coming, everyone, and we will adjourn at 7:42 PM.